Or good morning, I should say. I'm going to call to order the Pierce County Council in a special meeting of a committee of the whole. Today is July 30th, 2025. The time is 9:32. And I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Committee member Yonbe?
I am here.
Committee member Morrell?
He is excused. I know he is literally here, so we will see if he gets on Zoom as well as Councilmember Kruever. So we'll, but go ahead and continue this person's.
Committee member Ayala?
Here.
Committee member Kruever? I can hear from her from behind me, but I cannot hear her audio on Zoom.
Okay. Maybe someone can check on that's has some time. Mr. Taylor in chambers can run over. And we'll just keep doing roll call.
Committee member Dunson?
Here.
Committee member Herrera?
He's on his way. He just popped his head in. He's trying to get on right now.
Okay, well, excuse him and then we'll just maybe.
Committee member Hitchen?
I am here.
You have four committee members present.
Okay. And we are now joined by Vice Chair Herrera.
Okay.
And Councilmember Kruever is in the attendees list. We want to move her over. Welcome, Councilmember Kruever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry there were more traffic, uh, traffic, a lot of traffic work back, back up today.
All good. Okay. And we'll keep an eye out for Councilmember Morrell. So we now have six members. I just, for the record, we had a power shortage or power outage over the weekend that must with our system that does not allow us to have more than one microphone running at a time in chambers without tons of feedback. So we are, we are actually all in our offices and we have a few staff in chambers using one microphone. So they'll be running up to the podium to speak. And then the majority of like, we're here to do this work this morning. And so that is why this is a little bit different if anybody is tuning in, both from county staff and also the public. So thank you for joining us in a committee of the whole. I'm going to start with an approval of the agenda. There is literally only one item on the agenda. There's nothing to move around. So I'm not, I'm assuming we are good with our one topic of discussion today. Cause if we're not, then I don't know what we're here for. Okay. So the agenda is approved, which brings us to our first item and only item of business this morning. And I'm going to, before we do that, we're going to move Councilmember Morrell over. He is in the attendees list. Perfect. Good morning, Councilmember Morrell.
I did it all by myself.
Well done. We were all really good at this like four years ago and, and we've kind of lost our, our skills here, but it's okay. It was good to be able to fall back. So I was about to ask the clerk to read, or since this is a committee, do we need to have it read into the record? This person's, we're not at the dais and I'm all out of fun. Okay.
Yes.
So we will start with the clerk reading it into the record.
Proposal number O 2025-523, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council amending ordinance number 2023-44S2 as amended by ordinance number 2024-568S2, the biennial budget of Pierce County for fiscal years 2024 through 2025.
Thank you. And then we are going to turn this over to Mr. Bokey, I'm assuming, and to kind of kick off the conversation. So we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Hitchen, Paul Bokey, council staff. You have in front of you in this proposal, this is the second supplemental budget of this biennium. And this is, does a number of things. You received a presentation the other day from the Director of Finance, Ms. Julie Demuth, but I'll quickly go through the information that's on Exhibit A. So in general fund, in the revenues, there is an increase in the use of fund balance by $25,235,000. Within that increase is to miscellaneous current expense, $25,100,000. Of that, $25 million is going to be provided to the Department of Finance to allocate to departments to address programmatic and operational impacts resulting from the loss of reduction of federal funding during fiscal year 2025. And then the other hundred thou, and then there's a hundred thousand dollars provided to the Department of Planning and Public Works to hire a consultant to be used by the Department of Planning and Public Works to hire a consultant to review the department's funds, including how fees are set and how financial policies are applied and whether reserves are adequate and properly maintained. The consultant will recommend any needed changes to fiscal policies, fee models, and reserve practices. A summary of findings and recommendations must be submitted to the council. So, and you guys have had a fairly robust discussion around fees. The other items that it handles is in internal service funds or self-insurance fund. The, the increase in that, the expenditure authority in that is $25,400,000. It would modify the budget to make a technical adjustment recognizing claim liabilities incurred or anticipated during the biennium. This adjustment ensures alignment with accounting standards and reflects the county's obligation to address pending or resolved claims. And then under custodial funds, there's the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, $1,216,030. That's an increase. That's an increased expenditure authority to align the adopted 2024, 25 Pierce County Biennial Budget with amendments made by the Health Department in the fall of 2024 and the spring of 2025. There's also one change in, towards the end of the document in, in your, in section 16 of the budget document that deals with, department shall notify the county council in right, in writing on any position converted or the creation of a new position not denoted in the staffing summaries of Exhibit A to this ordinance on a quarterly basis. So in last year, there was added to that section, couple of sentences, position conversions and the sheriff law enforcement and sheriff corrections shall not become effective until notification of the position change has been received by the county, by the county council. And the county council has approved the position changed by motion through its consent agenda. So that portion will be struck and it's on page 35 and it begins on line seven and goes through line 11. And so that language will now be struck. So I am available to answer any questions. Ms. Demuth is also on the line to answer any questions and we do have two amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. I will start with questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Morrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one is, question is probably to, I'll start with Mr. Bokey. First question is on the 1.3 million to the Health Department. That dollar amount, that commitment, is that part of our share that we have with the city of Tacoma to fund the Health Department? Or is this on top of that? And give me another justification for that increase.
So the, so the, the Health Department, it's, it's an increase in their expenditure authority. We are not giving them as a county, any additional funding.
Okay.
So the Health Department, when they write their biennial budget for us to approve as part of our biennial budget, do their best to, to estimate their, their revenues. And this isn't, it just an upward adjustment in their revenues. So it could, and I don't have that information in front of me, but it could be just from fees. It could be additional federal money. It could be additional state money. It is, it is not additional money from the county. We are not giving them any additional dollars.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. If you could find out where that one in, maybe someone on the board knows that, but just curious to see why, where the increase came from. That would be great if they had an, an increase in fees, meaning they've got a lot of activity going on. If it's a federal influx of money. You know, obviously we've got to adjust their budget and everything's got to balance. I mean, I, I, you know, that's a good thing. So anyway, just kind of curious on that. The other issue that I, I just want to touch on, and I don't know, Mr. Bokey, if you could handle this or, or Ms. Demuth, but striking the Sheriff's Department language, where did that come from? And, and what's the justification on that? I mean, we discussed that pretty thoroughly in, in the budget last time when Executive Mello was Chair of the Council. And we all thought that was a good thing at the time. So why the about face on that?
I'm going to let Ms. Demuth handle that since that came from the executive.
Sure. Good morning. Julie Demuth, Director of Finance. I don't have the specifics in front of me. I apologize, but there is, there was, there's documentation from the state level that makes it very clear that the sheriff has the authority to make these types of changes, that the position conversion does not, it should not come to council for an approval. I can find that information. It was from earlier this year and bring that to you. So the, the request to convert a position would still come through our standard processes, which is an HR Director and Finance Director review, evaluation and approval. But this would allow the sheriff to make those changes without kind of the, the time and process required to bring it before council. It, it has to do with the authority granted to unelected sheriff. I, I can find that information and send it over.
Okay. If you, if you could do that, because I would assume if the, if there's a cost increase to do position conversions, that's council responsibility, isn't it?
If there's a cost increase, yes. The sheriff's office has been very good about working with us that where they have a cost increase, they are reducing another portion of their budget. So, so far we, we have not had an increase in costs. They've closed a position or, or offset through another expenditure reduction.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand the council's budget responsibility when it comes to any department, not only the Sheriff's Department, but I thought we had boxed this in pretty well when we did the proviso language last time. But I'm more than willing to hear what the state position is and how we came full circle back again to remove this language. Thank you.
Thank you for the question and thank you for the answers. We will go to Councilmember Kruever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And going back to the Health Department custodial funds, I noticed that it is increasing the expenditure authority to align with adopted budgets that they have. And I'm wondering, and with the amendments, do we have copies of that to know what, you know, what was in the budget that was adopted and these amendments that these dollars are for?
We'll get those to you. I don't know that I've seen them yet, but because there's been two, clearly two revisions, both in the fall of last year and the spring of this year. So.
Cause I'm wondering what's being aligned that this is for. And then I'm, I'm curious on the MCE dollars, the 25, one. Is, you know, is, was, I'm thinking that I kind of know the answer, but it has the 25 million to establish the contingency resulting from the loss. Is that the full amount we identify now? Or wasn't it more like, you know, 300,000 or 700,000 that's been identified and the rest is in case there's more?
Well, the, the total, you know, earlier this year, the executive put out a document that said the total programs at risk, there were 96 programs that had federal funding of 197 and a half million dollars. Of course, this time we're now in July, so that number is substantially smaller. But there are a number of federal programs. This does not specifically say what programs they will fund or won't fund. It just sets up a money that's available to backfill monies that they, they do not receive that they were expecting to get from the federal government. And I'll defer to Ms. Demuth on, on how that's going to come together, but that's, that's what we know right now.
So far with the rescission of the first federal grant for emergency management, it was, I think about a 700, a little over $700,000 grant. We've only expended about 10% of that grant so far. So we did seek reimbursement for those funds. Once we received the rescission notice, we don't have confirmation yet of whether we'll get that reimbursement. If we do not receive the reimbursement, then it'll be between 70, $75,000 that would come out of this contingency as well as the costs to provide the two week notice to the two employees that are impacted by the loss of this grant.
Oh. We're setting up a $25 million line item to draw from for this potential 70,000 and anything else that might happen.
It, it is very much contingency at this point. The, the $25 million was determined because it's generally a quarter of our federal funding budget for 2025. Where we have potential risks are what we're seeing happen with the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA is if we lose, right now, federal funding supports our emergency operations efforts. That's a responsibility of the county and a service that we are required to provide. If we were to lose any of our federal funds that support our emergency operations, that, that's a significant amount of money. And that's where we may have to look at this contingency in order to continue those core, critical emergency operations services. So that's one example of how the contingency could be used.
That require authorization from the council for every action, transaction?
There is a, a notice would be provided to council. If, if a decision is made that we need to utilize any of the contingency funds, advance notice would be provided to the council.
So it's a notice, but it's not requiring action by the council to authorize?
Correct.
And I'm, the 100,000 for PPW for a consultant. What, what can a consultant at this point, for the years that we have experienced with PPW and, and processes that have worked in the past, why would we spend a hundred thousand dollars when we have expertise in the county?
What we have found is that there's been some historical loss of expertise and knowledge as well as a lack of data and a disconnect between what we are charging for our permits and what we're recouping in terms of costs. PPW has identified that cost recovery is only at 57% right now, which is why this fund balance has been drawn down over the last three to four years. So a consultant would come in to assist them in really assessing the data that they have available, how they are determining their rate models, the information that is being used, inputs into that rate model, as well as looking at fiscal policies and procedures. So it's, it's really to come in and help provide support and building a stronger fiscal policy for that department.
Interesting. Okay. That, that's all I have for now. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the questions. And Councilmember Kruever, to your point about the notice versus the authorization conversation around, should the executive need to use some of the contingency fund? I have the initial first reaction as well. But everything that's being authorized have our, we've already voted on and approved in the budget. So there will be no new programs added without going through the normal processes. They, there's no level of being able to do this. It's just how it's funded, which is why the, the process, this is a little weird. These are unusual times. And so the hope is that the federal government continues to fund things, but we have already given, basically with the budget adoption, the authority to spend money to do these programs and provide these services. And we have now the, where the money's coming from is the, is the change. And that's, that's why we're in this pickle at this point. So I just wanted to add that because I initially had that same thought. I was like, wait, we get power of the pen, power of the purse. So.
Chair, and if I may just add, I, I, I understand that, that we had authorized in the past, but like you said, times are different. And I, I think urgency needs are different as well. And maybe there are things that may should be looked at again. And that's why I think it would be wise to have council authorization, but that's another topic for another moment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Ms. Demuth, I don't know if you're able to speak to this, but I'm going to kind of put you in a spot here and ask you. And if you're not, we can follow up later. But do you know, has the executive and finance and the department staff thought about a process for making decisions? Because I know like this one, we decided to basically back out of it and let the two, what's going to be the process about when to do it versus not use these funds? They're very limited.
Yes. And I did go through that criteria at the presentation. Was it Monday? Yes. So we are looking at it through the lens of primarily, one, protecting our most vulnerable residents. So that, that's one lens that we're looking at. And then two, what is core to our, what are we legally required to do? What are the services that the county is responsible for? So using the example of the grant that was rescinded from FEMA, that program was not core to services that the county is required to deliver. And so the decision was made not to continue that program using general fund resources. So we're, we're really carefully evaluating whether or not it is something that we're required to do as well as what's the impact on our residents. If it's a service providing food, providing basic needs to our most vulnerable residents, we are going to consider that as well in, in the decision. So very cognizant of, we, we don't have the ability to continue every grant funded program where we may lose grant funds. It's, it's just not, it's not at all possible, given our limited resources. So once, you know, we're pulling together a team that involves, if a department receives notice that a grant is rescinded, it's going to be the, the department expertise and the subject matter experts. We're drawing in human resources, communications, the finance department, as well as the executive team and doing a real thorough evaluation and analysis, understanding what's the impacts, who is impacted, what are the costs? So we are approaching it methodically and we'll have a structured process in place.
Thank you. I just wanted, that message said again, I guess, just so we could hear it again, or if somebody only listens to this meeting so that they heard that there was some thinking around it. Are there other questions for Ms. Demuth or Mr. Bokey? Councilmember Kruever?
Madam Chair, I just thought of, of one other one, and that was regarding the MCE again for the for the reduction in federal funding, where I understand it, it can't create anything new. But if there is one of the funds that might need more money now and other monies weren't used, can that, can more money be put into a program than was originally allowed or allotted?
No, uh, no, there is no program expansion, even if it's something included in the budget. We're not expanding any programs. We're not adding any new programs. It's very much limited to what was approved in the budget.
So if ABC organization got 50,000 and that was in jeopardy and they had used 20,000, we would reimburse the 20 only. And.
Depending on, yes, depending on the specifics.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the questions. Other questions? Okay. I'm not seeing any. So we do have two committee amendments. They're both sponsored me, by me. So I'm going to look to my colleagues to see if somebody is willing to move committee amendment number one.
I move committee amendment number one.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt committee amendment number one to proposal O 2025-523. Mr. Bokey to brief.
Thank you, Chair Hitchen, Paul Bokey, council staff. Amendment number one is, it came from the executive and it is, the following amendment authorizes a transfer from the general fund to the building and development fund to offset declining permit revenues. Current fee structures do not fully recover the costs of providing permitting and development services, creating a structural funding gap that threatens the program's long-term fiscal sustainability. The transfer provides short-term support to maintain operations while the county evaluates options to improve cost recovery and establish a more sustainable funding model for future biennium. So how this works is on page one of the proposal, use of fund balance will increase that amount by three and a half million dollars. Then in the general fund, it will increase miscellaneous current expense by three and a half million dollars and add superviso that up to three and a half million dollars of the miscellaneous current expense appropriation shall be transferred to the building and development fund to offset declining permit revenues. And so it, I, I just want to point out, this does not increase the budget authority for the building and development fund. This is just really filling in monies. You know, the, the billion development fund has a biennial budget of, of revenue, expected revenues were 41.6 million. We're now more than 75% of the way through the biennium and, and revenues are at about 68%. They've used, their, their loss so far in the biennium is, as of today, is $4.3 million, which has used up a substantial amount of its fund balance. It had a very nice big fund balance at the beginning of the biennium, over $4.8 million. And, and they, they do need a fund balance to operate that fund. So this will, will backfill that. There's no additional expenditure authority with, for the department. It's just getting money into that to make sure that they have enough money to operate for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunson with a question or comment?
Kind of both. I'm, I'm going to be supporting this amendment, but not happy about it at all. I mean, we've discussed a number of times that we are nowhere close to 100% cost recovery. I think we talked, we're down in the 50%, which means that other taxpayers are subsidizing developers, people getting permits, which is not fair. Our general fund, which is very limited already, is now going to be also subsidizing the service. Our general fund, which is very limited already, is now going to be also subsidizing the service. So those are my comments, and I know we're going to be looking at the fee structure for the next biennium. But my question for Mr. Bokey is, do I understand it correctly that planning and public works could administratively adjust these fees upward, at least somewhat? Is it something that they could do so that we don't keep digging a hole?
It's my understanding that when I talk to council staff, that there are a few fees that they could increase administratively. I'm not an expert on that. There are a number of other fees that the council has to approve that are in code. So yes, there are things that they can do administratively. That's what I've been told. I can't get into specifics on it. There are people who can, but that is true.
I appreciate that, and I'm sure that they are listening, and I'm sure they've already thought about this too. And I know I've been in this situation with other local government positions that you don't increase fees, you don't increase fees, you don't increase fees. All of a sudden you have to increase fees and it's a huge increase and everyone's upset. And I get it. I get it. It's better to gradually increase fees consistent with, you know, cost of living or inflation or our staff. I mean, that's just the more responsible way to do that. So anything the department thinks is a responsible thing to do at this point. You know, we're a little bit more than halfway through the year, but anything that we can do incrementally will be better, I think, for the, I mean, no one wants more money, more increases in costs, I'm sure, as a business. But I think it's better done over time and it will be better for our cash flow, which is the fiscally responsible thing to do as stewards of taxpayer dollars here in Pierce County. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Vice Chair Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question a little bit on, I guess, the history. I'm sure we've been in this situation before where, you know, economies slowed down. We're not building, we're not collecting these fees. Have we've done this before, like this type of amendment where we pulled money out to backfill?
We have not. This fund, from what I can tell, was created after the Great Recession, right around 2011, 2012. It built up a substantial fund balance. It does have a fund balance policy. And they built up a very substantial fund balance. And the fund was actually had a surplus most years. I go back to 2022, they actually, they lost about a million two in 2022. They lost 2.3 million in 2023. Last year in 2024, according to Workday, they lost about 3 million. That brought their fund balance down to about 1.8 million dollars. And so far this year, they've lost about a million dollars. Now, they have some months where they make money, where they run a surplus. But it's important to note, they do still have a fund balance. It's below what's required, which used to be 90 days. Now I think is a little bit higher. And the idea behind this fund was that this fund would be self-sustaining with the fees. And it just hasn't turned out that way because of, you know, we're just late on raising fees or the volumes have dropped farther than was anticipated.
And one last thing, follow up on that. So before we had this fund with the Great Recession, I'm sure we learned some lessons there, and that's why this came up. What did we do then?
It was in the general fund, actually, planning and land services. We still have a general fund account. Remember, we do, we still have a planning account. Years ago, that was split because the building community especially really felt like their fees should be set aside into its own separate fund to be protected. And other operations that were determined through a process, and Mr. Taylor was heavily involved in that process. I don't want to call him out, but he was there and he can talk more about it. But it was a very lengthy process with the building community, and that's why we still have a pretty substantial planning effort that we fund in the general fund, because those things were set up. And then there's fee-supported activities with the idea that we would not have to support it out of the general fund. And that's, unfortunately, that's, you know, it worked for over a decade, right? But until it didn't.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the questions. We'll go to Councilmember Kruber.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Wasn't it like 2012 when they went from having it as a general fund to having it be self-sustaining with fees?
I believe so, yeah.
I believe that, yeah, that happened just before I got here. I just have a different view in that we are not subsidizing developers because the developers are building for customers. And so those costs are extended on to who the project is for. And also, I see the developers may be used in a way because they are having to put in millions of dollars of infrastructure to certain codes in order to get a project done, to have things to present to the community. And so because there's a monopoly on this, I think we need to be more attentive to what we are charging for and the rules and regulations, because the regulatory system that we have put forth has created a lot of these expenses. And we know that things are tightening up extremely. I don't know what the word is, but everyone, they're penny pinching. And I find it very disheartening that we monitor our lawful citizens more than we do our unlawful citizens. You can't make a move without somebody saying, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. We have to pay to send somebody out. You know, every little thing has to be in the minutia of the plan check when we should be able to have some kind of, what's the word? Understanding that we have honest people that we deal with, instead of treating them all as if we're assuming they're going to try and cheat the system. And I think we need to look at the value of some of these regulations to the cost of the regulation. Having inspectors to go out and check a silt fence or some things, you know, you're not going to recoup those costs in the sale of the finished product. And then even with all of the checks and balances that are done at the county level and having to have, hire all of these experts on contingency to look at things, that adds to the expense. And still, there's no guarantee that the final project is going to be perfect. I think we have to understand that, you know, we are an imperfect product ourselves, doing the best we can and adding layers of regulations, you know, adds more costs. It is discouraging to having more building done, and it's draining the citizens of their savings in order to try and get a home, try and buy a car or build a carport, et cetera. So I have a problem with you looking at just funding more fees rather than reducing the fees and taking that off the charts. So just my thoughts. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your comments. We will go to Councilmember Ala.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Mr. Bokey, when you were answering Councilmember Herrera's question, you seem to have a very kind of short time, not short timeline, but you've had a timeline of information that you shared. Is that in writing or is there a way for us to kind of get a map of where this fund balance has lived in before? What supported that? What those numbers were? Just to kind of get a little history or retrospective on what that's been over the last decade or so?
Yeah, the information that I've pulled up is, it just came out of Workday. We can go back further because we've got annual reports that go back, go back further. But the fund, just it, the fund had built up a very substantial fund balance in excess of 8 million dollars. It might have actually been higher. I'm just looking at year ends. And they tend to lose money towards the end of the year, you know, because it's slower. So at times, the fund balance may have actually been even higher. But just going back to the end of 2021 looks like the most recent peak. And that's what's going on. I think what you'll see when we put the numbers together is that there was substantial activity during COVID and the very low interest rate environments we had prior to that and surrounding that. There was a lot of building activity, a lot of money came in. The building activity went down a bit. It's, I need to express, these are not, the building activity is not at recessionary levels. If building activity was at recessionary levels or levels like we saw during the Great Recession, you would have already had to have acted, because they would have lost so much money. Building, it's really that revenues have plateaued and our expenses continue to go up, right? So the cost, the cost of having the employees do the work continues to increase at a 3% or 4% year. So not only do you have to do some kit, and I don't, this isn't about fees, but in short, not only if you don't assume a higher rate of activity in the next biennium, if you say, well, the activity is going to be about the same, you have to make up a gap that runs between 150, $200,000 a month on the low side. Plus, you have to figure that your costs of having, your costs of doing business are going to increase between 3% and 4% a year. So you know, you factor in that you've got catch-up, plus you've got two years of cost increases on top of that. And that you see your conundrum when it comes to fees. If you don't expect that there'll be more volume. So it's, the fund worked for quite a while. It worked for over, it's worked for over a decade, right? It did exactly what it was supposed to do, which was build up a fund balance. And then when times got slow, that fund balance would work its way down because it's all fees, it's all stuff people have paid in, builders have put in. So now the, it's just everybody, you know, everyone just waited too long to come to the aid of this fund now. Or we're having to come to the aid of the fund because the fund wasn't adjusted, the fees weren't adjusted to really deal with the situation that was in front of us. So yes, we can get you that information.
Can I, Chair, or Paul, can I add one more footnote to that, to the discussion about fund balance relative to this fund? As the council members, keep in mind that when Paul talks about a fund balance relative to this fund, that fund balance in part represents work obligations of the county towards a project. So you can imagine a subdivision or a large commercial development might take anywhere from six months to three years to complete. And so they pay those, some of those fees upfront. Those fees might be represented in that fund balance, but the work at the department may continue beyond a biennium or a fiscal year. So I would ask you to keep that in mind when Paul's describing the fund balances going up and down. There's a work obligation associated with that as well on the part of the county.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Ala, do you have additional questions?
No additional questions. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is, you know, an interesting discussion that we're having. I appreciate some of the comments and some of the philosophical views within this, but understanding that when you have a monopoly, there are very little efficiencies built into those monopolies. The development, the permitting, government is a monopoly. There is no competition. They have to go through the county's permitting process. The state adds requirements, there are unfunded mandates that the county has to deal with. Developers try to make it as efficient as possible because no one likes to get redlined on every issue. But understand, you're never going to have full cost recovery when you have a monopoly. If, you know, and we, those who sat in the economic development and infrastructure meeting with the panels that said, this stuff that the county is putting upon themselves, we're more than willing to help carry that load. So you don't have to spend time adjusting my boundary line six inches. I mean, these type of stuff is just ludicrous. And as long as the county is in a monopolistic permitting mentality that we control, we tell you what to do and you have to do it, there will never be full cost recovery because developers can't afford to deal with this. And, you know, if you want developers going somewhere else, you just do 100% cost recovery and your economy is going to go in the toilet. So, you know, we have to understand that, you know, the more we can get permitting to allow for developers to have more responsibility in this process, they're more than willing to do that. They spend, you know, on a couple of these commercial developments, they probably spend $5 million on consultants before it even gets to the county. So to look at full cost recovery, there is no jurisdiction in America that gets full cost recovery from development. And that's just what we have to do is try to figure out where we can come up with efficiencies and make PPW understand that delegating these responsibilities to licensed professionals is not a bad thing. So, you know, I'm more than willing to take a look at this. I'm not thrilled about having to do this because there again, with staffing increases, with adding more responsibility to the permitting process, a lot of this is out of our control and out of the developer's control. So keeping that in mind, we just need to understand that there's got to be a way to move the permitting process forward with efficiencies that benefit both the developers and the county, thus making, you know, housing, business expansion affordable in Pierce County. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. I know that EIDC has done a really nice job of bringing in different perspectives on that and example, like hard concrete Pierce County related examples, which is important. Ms. Demuth, the $100,000 for the consultant is, part of this is to kind of figure out what is going on as far as the permitting process and then the changes that have been made in the last couple of years to, I think it was called the WIP program. You know, is that actually working? Are we seeing benefits? So is that part of the thinking here?
Yes, it is part of the thinking. I mean, we have a multifaceted problem that's been identified. You know, one, inaccurate revenue forecasting is occurring. Two, we have expenditure growth that's exceeding available revenues. And then, three, the rate modeling is insufficient. You know, at only 57% cost recovery, we're not generating enough revenue. So those are the three primary factors that will be addressed with the outcome in mind of our permitting processing times. You know, right? The goal is to have, you know, we can't have excessive processing times for our permit. So how do we achieve that with the available resources that we have?
Okay, because I know in the developer world, time is definitely money when they're waiting for a permit to get finalized. I have learned this in the last couple of years from Councilmember Morrell's repeated frustrations around this space and the panels that have been really informative. So, okay, thank you. That's good to hear. Makes me feel a little bit better about spending money on another consultant to talk about things. I just continue to, we'll see where we land. I just continue to, we'll see where we land. Uh, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I still am hesitant on having a consultant as well because I'm reminded of, you know, we've had those red tape reduction committees and I don't know, I don't recall seeing maybe, you know, any recommendations written out or what the findings were, or maybe looking at that rather. You know, for those who, who deal with the system and those who run the system, I, it seems they should be able to get more information out of, out of that realm to help, you know, move this along rather than, you know, doing a hundred thousand for another study. So, that's why I don't know if we have any reports from the red tape. So, thank you.
Mr. Voki or Mr. Moose, I'm not familiar with the red tape study, so, or Mr. Taylor.
The product, it's generally the predecessor to the WIP process. It was a, um, internal committee of the Planning and Public Works Department where, um, members of the development community could provide recommendations and have dialogue with department staff on ways to improve processes and workflow. The most recent iteration is the WIP process that Mr. Moose referred to, which is the, uh, an improvement process, a workflow improvement process is the, is the WIP.
Okay, thank you. So we're still on Committee Amendment number one. I'm, um, I want to go back to what Councilmember Denson said about permit fees. Also, what Councilmember Morrell says, increasing permit fees has implications in our community. We have passed a policy in the past to have, um, stuff that tried to make it a hundred percent. Mr. Moose, is this study, the miscellaneous current, or the department study with the consultant, going to be done before we start adopting fees for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, or is it going to come out after?
The study will be done in time, uh, to inform the, the rate structure for twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's really focused on long-term sustainability and significant changes that we need to make. The Planning and Public Works Department is working on their proposal for rate changes for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, I can note that, you know, there, the analysis that they've done so far has indicated that Pierce County fees are below all of our surrounding jurisdictions with the exception of Thurston County. King County, Snohomish County, Kitsap County, as well as Mason County all have fees that are at higher levels than what will be proposed in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So there, there will be rate changes proposed with the budget with the hope that the consultant can help inform, uh, you know, more longevity in terms of our rate structure and modeling.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Morrell?
Thank you. Um, you know, we, we kind of have this discussion every time, uh, we, we look at, uh, fee increases. Take the Parks Department. They do not come even close to a hundred percent capture on fees, and they're upfront about it. So, you know, if we're going to make one department do this, why not make all departments be one hundred percent capture of, of fees? So, you know, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and pick on the development community. I'll pick on every department out there that their cost recovery needs to be a hundred percent. If that's what this council wants to do, and that includes parks. So, that's my comment. So, I'll get off my soapbox on that. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you for the comments. Are there any other comments on Committee Amendment number one? Councilmember Yonbe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the dialogue that's, that's happening on this. I'm wrestling with this myself. I think that Councilmember Morrell raises good points and Councilmember Denson has raised good points. And, um, you know, I, I, I think that whatever we do has to, you know, the, the eventual result should be in collaboration with all our different partners and, and that means people on the service providing side and on the, um, customer side. But, you know, I, I don't have the advantage of being here for as long as some of my colleagues and, uh, the county. And, you know, I keep going through some of these names, you know, the, the best permitting agency and, and all these other things. And I've yet to see that we became the best permitting agency. And so I think, uh, I'm still trying to wrestle with, do we, do we ever accomplish some of these things? But, um, I, I do appreciate the dialogue here. I think it's a, it's a tough one. I think it's unfair sometimes that we try to right-size the ships midway through, but sometimes it has to happen. I think at the, the closest that I can think of was, you know, in, in the City of Fife when we were coming out of the big recession that, um, we had, the previous councils had kept our sales, um, our sewer utilities rates low during the pand, uh, during the recession and, and didn't raise them. And then at one point we had to adjust to catch up. And so it was one of those that you had to right-size the ship somehow at some point. And then you had to go, you know, then we can do a reset and try to be more thoughtful in planning to adjust, you know, the, the two, two percent here and, and three, and the more predictability and the more transparency there is always good. So, but, but I appreciate the dialogue. I think that there's a lot of good points being made. But some, at some point we have to adjust to catch up. And so unfortunately, it might be one of those times. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Yonbe. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just, yeah, a lot of good points are made on this. And I, and I, I vacillate between supporting and not supporting. I, I'm concerned that we, we are just now approaching this when it has been declining all year and even, even last year when it's being used. And, and I just feel that, you know, we're being under a pressure to do something that maybe needs more, more thought, even though I understand they've, they're, it is declining. I, I, I just am inclined to think maybe address this a little bit later. We can always do another amendment to the budget, not that we want to do that, but perhaps that might be wiser and could get some time to look more at how to, how to deal with this, with this shortfall and why is it so expensive through the county? So that's just some comments for that now. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper, you kind of had a question in there. Do you want Mr. Moose to respond to why we, why we need to do this now when we don't have a budget shortfall, or was it more?
Well, it's kind of rhetorical. I, I know there's the shortfall there and, yeah, we're not at the max yet, correct? We, we, there is some time, but I would rather try to have some knowledge of some movement of things that can be done before just, you know, authorizing these dollars right now, maybe in a month or two or three. Well, so, it, I, I, I don't, if it's that urgent, why didn't we do this at the first of the year or the end of last year? You know, because we knew that, obviously, we could see this was coming. And I, I just don't think now is, is, um, I'm not comfortable with time right now, the timing. Maybe if, maybe if Mr. Moose, Demuth has something to add on why the urgency is now, I, I'm open to hearing, listening. Thank you.
Uh, yes, the, the urgency is now, uh, because as, with the expenditure rate the fund is incurring, the fund will go negative shortly over the next couple of months. And so this three and a half million is needed to make the fund solvent just this year. There is a much greater problem ahead of us in twenty-six, twenty-seven and beyond. So this three and a half million that would be moved to the fund gets us through the end of twenty-twenty-five and allows enough funding to be in the fund to cover our current obligations and liabilities when it comes to refunds that may be necessary for permits, uh, et cetera. So it's, unfortunately, is a very emergent situation. There are more significant changes ahead, not just in terms of rates, but in terms of operations and expenditures and adjustments that will need to be made in order for this fund to remain solvent in twenty-six, twenty-seven and beyond. So there are a lot more significant changes that will be brought forward in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget to help address fund sustainability going forward. This three and a half million is unfortunately needed for us to get through the end of twenty-twenty-five.
Can you elaborate on these changes, twenty-six, twenty-seven, that are going to have significant impact that maybe we should be aware of?
I don't have all the details yet. We're working with the department, uh, to, to bring their budget proposal together, but it's a combination of fee increases, so there'll be substantial increases to permitting and developing fees as well as decreases to their expenditures. There are expenditure reductions being put into place now, so vacant positions are being held open, uh, to generate savings. They are ending the third-party reviews so that we don't have those costs. That will save about a million dollars, um, and looking at other areas to reduce expenditures.
When you say ending third-party reviews and that costs, you said a million?
That should generate about a million dollars in savings.
How does that work where if I, if I need to have, um, the stormwater checked and I go to somebody licensed and stamped and bonded, why does that cost the county if I have that work done somewhere else?
Um, I probably need the department to answer this. My understanding is that the, these are costs, uh, the third-party reviews we're contracting out to help with our permitting workload. And so it's, it's ending, ending those external reviews and bringing the reviews in-house.
Are there any new, new, I want to say departments being created within PPW that you are aware of?
Departments, um, they've-
Or sections or however you want to term it?
Uh, they, they've done their restructure this year, uh, which created two, not sure what they're referring to it, but there's the public works and utilities side and then the, um, building and community development. I may have the name off, uh, side. And they have done some restructuring within both of those, um, call them divisions. That's not the right word, though.
Because like we're growing the department in the sense of now there's, we have an arborist and we have an archaeologist and all of these different things. Is that, is that part of the increase in the cost of, of, uh, planning of public works is?
Uh, within planning and development, there has been a growth in the number of positions added in recent budgets and that, that is something that's being reassessed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the questions. We'll go to Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think there again, uh, based on, um, the facts that are staring the council in the face, I think it'd be prudent to move this forward. I, I think there needs to be bookends put around this. I will be running some amendments at final. But, uh, I don't think that delaying this is going to be of benefit to anyone. I've had multiple conversations with Director Dykman and he understands the magnitude of the challenge that he's dealing with. I am a little concerned there again about cutting third-party reviews off because that means you got to bring it in-house and educate staff to do those reviews. The reason why we did three-party reviews is to get the permits out in a timely manner. So there again, I go back to, is all this going to bring predictability back to this, uh, permitting process that everyone seems to be searching for, um, as long as I've been here? So, um, I, I have a little concern about there again, bringing everything in-house, hiring staff. I know that, uh, the department has lost a lot of very knowledgeable employees over the last three years. All their major, um, department heads have left. And, uh, they're dealing with a lot of new, uh, staff members who just don't get, um, what the culture is of Pierce County. And that's Mr. Dykman's responsibility to, um, get the ship headed in the right direction, get everyone, uh, accustomed to how can we get to yes instead of using no as a delay tactic in this permitting process? So, um, this isn't, if we pass this, roll it into a substitute, it'll be finalized on the twelfth is my understanding. So council members have the opportunity to draft amendments to this as well as any other thing within this, uh, um, request. So, um, at this point, I'm, I'm willing to move it forward with the understanding that hopefully, uh, some common sense amendments can be accepted at final. So, thank you, Madam.
Thank you for the comments. Um, okay, so we have Committee Amendment number one before us. Zoom makes this really hard, um, but I'm going to do just a, an, a call for the question on adopting this one. And then Ms. Persons, if you feel like you couldn't figure out who said what, if, if there's issues, we'll, we'll come back and, and change it to a roll call. Or if any of my colleagues wanted as a roll call, we could do that as well. Are we all good with a regular, I will just ask, all those in favor of adopting Committee Amendment number one, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Persons, are you comfortable? I heard seven ayes.
That's what I heard.
Okay, so the, uh, motion carries, Committee Amendment number one is, um, approved. We have before us Committee Amendment number two.
Chair, move, uh, Committee Amendment two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Committee Amendment number two. I'm going to go to Mr. Voki to explain this one as well.
Thank you, Chair Hitchens. This amendment will change the notification requirement for the executive to inform the council of expenditures for federal funding backfills. The amount will, of time will change from the, at least ten days prior to the allocation. It'll change from, um, at least ten days and we're inserting the word i- insert five. So, uh, the original submission of the, of the supplemental budget had five days and the amount was inadvertently changed to ten days during the council review process. So when this was received from the executive, it read, uh, notification shall be provided to the council at least five business days prior to the allocation of any funds, uh, under this proviso.
Thank you. Are there questions on this amendment? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm just, it just, it just happened to change from five to ten accidentally. I, I, how did that happen? That's odd.
Okay, let me, let me address that if I could. So in, in staff review of the proposal, uh, we had flagged the, uh, need to have a discussion with members about the five days. And there was a notation that ten days may be appropriate and should be considered. The, um, the language was modified though, and so I'll, I'll take that responsibility in not being clear in communicating, um, that item. So that's on council staff. That's, we would normally not make a change of that substance at the staff level. It would be done through an amendment. Um, it had been flagged though, my staff. So I will take responsibility for that error on our part.
Yeah, on a scale of one to ten, it's a zero, but I, I'm just curious if I, if there's an answer as to the, wh-, to me, ten sounds better anyway. Yeah, I, will, will five days make a big difference in the dispersment of the dollars or the need? Because there's so much information coming at us today that having that extra five days on something-
On a more serious note.
Councilmember Yonbe, your mic is on.
It, it just, I, it gives that little bit of caution and I think, I don't see where it would make a difference in the, in the distribution. And maybe it does. I don't know. If that can be elaborated on.
Chair, can I, can I address that, mind, or not? I have a response to that. I mean, at least what staff was thinking. Okay, so, um, staff would wish to ensure that the council had an opportunity, if it desired to do so, to have at least one meeting upon receiving- Staff want, wish to ensure that the council had an opportunity, if it desired to do so, to have at least one meeting upon receiving the notice. So the, if, if it wished to talk about what the content of the notice was at a study session, for instance. Staff wanted to ensure that there was sufficient time to do that. The proviso language that was submitted is five business days, which does provide that opportunity for at least one. Dialogue of the council at a study session, so that would be preserved with the five days. That was staff's. Key item that we wanted to ensure that the council in its oversight capacity had the opportunity to at least meet once and the five days. Does do that. The 10-day suggestion would have given an opportunity for a, a little bit more of a cushion. But the five days is sufficient to allow for at least. One meeting of the council if it desired to do so and in response to a notice. So, does that answer your question, Councilmember?
But as I was processing what you were saying, was the five days, then that gives us at least a study session to be able to discuss? That, that kind of a thing? Okay.
Right.
That helps. All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the question and the response. Councilmember Morel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's, it's my understanding that it's. That. Our responsibility here is just that we receive the notification. We don't have to take any action, nor do we have any authority really to do anything. So we can't say, oh, um, no, we don't like this use of the backfill money. Um, i- i- is that my understanding here?
Yes, yeah, but. There's, there's no requirement for you to vote on each of these changes. The, the, the. Amendment that, or the information that's in there provides the $25 million uh to the executive to backfill. And, and it is at the discretion of the executive side as described by Ms. Demuth in their process.
Okay, and so do i- in the notification process. Do we have to do any public notice on anything? Or is it just internal to the council only?
Well, if, if, if you're given. We haven't decided how the notification will look. We're thinking it'll be along the lines of the contract notifications that you receive, so you'll receive them electronically. Um, so those become public record. Um, and, and if the council has some uh internal requirement that they would like to have to post these or something, we certainly staff can loo- look at doing that.
Okay, um, so then if we public notice them and the public wants to make a comment at a meeting. The only time they would have that opportunity is during a council meeting. Is that correct?
Apparently that would be the only time that is on a regularly scheduled cadence.
Okay, so if we kept it 10 days, that would for sure allow a council meeting to happen versus five days. Five days, if we get notification on a Monday, well, on a, let's say we get notification on a Wednesday. Um, that would be five business days, right, Paul? Uh, Mr. Boki, is that five business days or does?
Yeah, so the, so let's say, I think the latest. So let's go out, if it was a Wednesday morning, we got a notification, you would have until. Uh, you know, five business days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then you'd have Monday, Tuesday. On a, on a normal week, so you would, that, that would meet the notification requirements.
Okay, well, uh, you know, my concern on, on reducing the time, I'm, I'm leaning more towards the 10 days. I don't think it's going to mount to much um reduction uh. Time-wise, if it's 10 days or 15 days. Um, so I would rather have the 10 days so to make sure that it gets posted. And we get opportunities for the public to comment on it and not try to um. You know, move this through quickly, so um I, I'm probably not going to support this amendment. Um, I would prefer it be the 10 days, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the comments. I, I will note is, is like the minimum, so. It says at least. My hope would be as soon as they find out that this is at, at risk, that they are immediately sending it to us, whether it's. You know, five months out before we really have to do a decision or if it's five weeks. Like as soon as the executive's office and department staff know that. We have employees or programs that are uh in jeopardy of being cut that, that we are being aware and we are aware. We have that master list of all the ones that. Are funded by the federal government, um, so technically we do have that list. So I do hear you. Um, I think one of the reasons I like the idea of making sure that we have um at least one council meeting. And that'd be interesting to think about how to do that. To create a space for that is, is to allow us to make sure that people are aware of. Um, county dollars being shifted to pay for something the federal government's supposed to be doing, so um I'm always happy to ring that bell. Councilmember Kruber?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm wondering if maybe it might be something that, to amend the amendment um. Where it could appear on a consent agenda, so there's at least one council meeting where it has the opportunity to be discussed. And if it's on the consent, we may or may not take the time to discuss. Is, is that?
Would that be like the grants or, because then we're voting, like consent agenda is voting and we don't have any, like, we don't approve or dis-.
Right. We're, we're approving to be neutral, I guess, might be, might be, or, or proving that we acknowledge its receipt. In, in that sense, but I. I, I'm inclined to stay with the 10 as well, but uh I'm just looking for something that g- gives the opportunity for public comment.
Okay. Other comments on this one?
Madam Chair, can I offer one comment?
Mr. Taylor, yes.
Sorry to continue the conversation. So at your Monday's uh study session. Ms. Demuth provided the, the reasoning behind uh the executive branch's desire to keep it at five business days. It relates to notice to employees that are potentially affected by loss of federal funding and the implications relative to pay periods, for instance. Um, you might ask Ms. Demuth if she wishes to add any additional comments on this before taking action.
Thank you. Mr. Demuth, would you like to? Give us a little context on pay periods and the like?
Sure, thank you. Uh, yes, so the, the. The 10-day notice period would require us to extend pay and benefits for a second pay period. In instances where employees are impacted by the loss of federal funds, meaning if we have to. Give an employee notice that their position is ending. Uh, with a five-day notice period, we would be able to provide them with a two-week notice period uh that the position is ending. With a 10-day notice period, that's a full two weeks, that, that is a full pay period. Um, we would have to give the 10-day notice and then provide a subsequent pay period, so providing an employee with four weeks of. Pay as opposed to two. Uh, the, the risk here is that should we encounter an instance where federal funding is lost that impacts a large number of positions. 20, 25, I don't, I don't know how many, but we have large programs that are federally funded. If we lose that funding and we're in a position where we need to give employees notice, there is a, a much more significant cost implication. If we're having to do an additional pay period. Um, that, that is at the crux of, of the request for the five-day notice. As the chair mentioned, our goal would be to notify council as soon as we know something. Um, so it could be well in advance of, of a five-day notice. Um, in this instance with the FEMA grant, we received the notice, I think, last Thursday. We had to act on Friday. So there are instances where there are really short notification periods. Um, I can commit to bringing to the council. Uh, as much information as we have available, uh, what was evaluated, uh, why a decision was made. Um, I could present at a study session around uh the ramifications of the decision and, and what went into that decision-making as well.
Thank you for the context there and explanation. Councilmember Morel.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation, Ms. Demuth, but. The notification process to the council should not affect. The employees because alls we're requesting, one is a 10-day notification, so that way we can put it. Uh, on. You know, a, a, a public document that the public can have a comment on it. Y- y- we're not slowing the process down. You, you, the executive, i- i- if we pass this has full authority to. You know, get the funds, so I, I guess I don't understand. What the difference is between five, 10, 15, 20 days of notifying the council. If, if alls, th- the, that we're being done, you know, that we're being told is. We're just notifying that you, you, we're going to do this. We're going to do it anyway. So it isn't like the council can throw a wrench in it and say, no, uh, you, you need to lay. X amount of employees off because we don't agree with this. So i- 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 am I missing something there?
If I could respond, uh, we don't, within that notice period, we, we do not take any action. It's similar to the 21-day notice pertaining to contracts. Once that notification is provided to council. No action is taken until that notification period has ended, so. We submit a notice to council and then the contract waits for that notification period to end, so similar here. Once the notice is submitted to council, there would be no payments made, no action taken until that notice period has ended.
So is there a requirement that we even get notified?
It, there's not a requirement, no. This was in the interest of council remaining informed and, and. Us being very transparent in what the decisions are that are being made, so it's really around communication of information. Uh, notification of how funds will be expended if we're needing to tap into the contingency. Uh, it's, it's really focused on transparency of information.
Well, I, I appreciate that, um, but um to use the council as a reason why you can't. You can't um enact a contract i- i- in this capacity, I, 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 I don't agree with. Um, you're, you're basically putting your own rules on this that says, well, we'll. During a notification, we'll take no action. That is the executives. Privy to, to make that decision. Alls we're asking is, yeah, we get notified. Yeah, the public has a chance to comment on it, whether that be five weeks or five days, 10 days, 20 days. I, I don't understand. We're not telling the exec that, oh, during the notification process, you can't take any action. I- i- is that correct?
For all the other notices that are provided by council, that has historically been the approach. Uh, I'm not sure if. Mr. Taylor could perhaps share some more background, but in, in instances where a notification is, is given, we are not acting during that period.
Sure, with uh Ms. Demuth's comments here, that has been the, the practice and the intent behind notification language. It's, you know, it's adopted through ordinance, so it does have force and the way it's been interpreted. For many, many years is that action would not be taken during a period where required notice to the council. Uh, had been provided, and so that's, that's been the practice and the interpretation of prior notice languages that have been adopted by ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. So somewhere in some historical document, that's been past practice. Is, is that what you're saying, Mr. Taylor?
Councilmember, that's been the past practice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the questions. We will go to. Okay, Councilmember Morel, you kept putting your hand up and down, so now I'm going to go to Kruber because she's technically next in line, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just, my understanding that is there a policy in place? On notifying the council for when there are notices of contracts, the ones that we get now.
Yes.
So that is written in policy now, because this policy I would say is different because it is a, under a certain circumstance. And it affects the budget in terms of notices of employment, whereas the other ones do not, because those were already planned, correct?
The contract notification language is in the budget document actually, and is a requirement of the budget. The 21-day contract notification.
Okay, so these are not 21-day contract notifications. These are just a notice of an action by the exec. And so I have to be in agreement with Councilmember Morel in, in that. It's, w- w- we don't have the authority for one and. You know, to, just to, to tell the executive what to do on this. And this is just the council looking for opportunity to um have disclosure to the public. And giving, you know, time for that, for feedback. And that's, so that's where I don't understand why there is an, an understanding there needs to be no action taken during the 10 days. When there's no policy in place to require that.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the table. We have a lot of discussion about the amendment. Um, and some questions that I think maybe sounds like we need to do some fine tuning or thinking about this and I think. Uh, larger conversation about what we want to be able to do as the council with this information and then the implications as far as Ms. Demuth, because I don't think any of us want to. Leave employees in a, in limbo. We also don't want the council to be meeting to be where someone finds out that their department is. Their position is being lost, like there's a process that we have to go through, so there's that part, so. Um, we need to think about how best to both. Get to the point of providing transparency, potentially public comment if somebody has thoughts. Uh, do right by our employees and also not potentially waste money, so um. Since there is an amendment that's been proposed, does anyone have? Thoughts on how we want to move forward, because as the maker of the amendment, I think I'm allowed to pull it, but it's, since it's been moved and seconded, I not, we'll go to Ms. Persons, so I'm letting you know that might come up. Mr., uh, Councilmember Morel.
Thank you. I, I would definitely be willing to work with you on getting a reasonable amendment. Uh, or, uh, yeah, amendment at final, because it would still have to come back as amendment. You would pull this one. And then we would come back with mul- probably multiple amendments at, at uh final, but. I would be willing to work with you to come up with a common sense approach to this. For all the reasons that you stated, so, thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Persons, it's an amendment. Help, help me figure out how I do this.
Um, since there is a motion on the table, you can withdraw that motion?
I didn't make the motion, so does it have to be the person that made the motion?
I believe so, so that would Herrera.
Sure, um. Yeah, I'll uh. I'll uh risk, what, just pull it or I just uh?
I withdraw the motion for council, uh, committee amendment two, something like that.
Yeah, withdraw the, my uh motion for committee amendment two.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we withdraw committee amendment number two. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we withdraw committee amendment number two with the intent that we're going to come back and fine tune this. Any further discussion on this?
Oh, so I'm sorry to interject, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a full motion to withdraw. Just the maker of the original motion would need to withdraw the original motion, so no need to vote or second.
Perfect, never mind. Then we're good. I was forgetting which dinosaur we were on, everybody.
I don't think that's right, but I'll discuss that later.
Okay. Does anyone object to pulling this amendment and with the intent that we'll come back? Okay, not seeing any objections. So, okay. So we now have this before us. I want to just pause and see if there are any other questions or anybody is working on something that they want to daylight with their colleagues before we open this up for public comment. Okay. Based on the conversation that we just had, I think, I just want to flag this, this five day versus 10 day. I'm wondering, and this may be Councilmember Morale and staff and even Ms. Demuth, thinking about what would it look like if we just basically created a process for this pot of money around notice and public transparency that allows you to do the work, so we're not jeopardizing the funds, but then, so it would be different. So to Councilmember Morale's point about, or maybe it was Councilmember Kruger, that you get to move forward with your work because we're just making it public. So if there is a quick turnaround, but there's a process where we are going to provide community the ability to learn about this expenditure, possibly provide public comment if they do have thoughts, but it wouldn't stop you. And so putting that into writing as a, like a proviso for this pot of money so that you can do your work and we can have our transparency and voice any questions that we have in a way that does not create a really complicated process, everybody. That's, that's the goal, something, something simple. So we can work on that. Okay. So we do have ordinance 2025-523, as amended, we adopted council amendment number one. So I am going to open this up for public comments. I'm making assumption there's no one in chambers.
There are no members of the public in chambers, Madam Chair.
There are no members of the public in chambers, so we will go online. If anybody'd like to address the council on ordinance 2025-523, Mr. Blainsberry, do you want to say your bit?
Good afternoon, or good morning, Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Donkey.
For any member of the public that'd like to provide a comment on proposal number O, 2025-523, please press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Madam Chair.
With no hands raised, we'll close public comment, bring it back before the council. This is going to the meeting of August 12th, so we've got two weeks to talk about, work on and perfect this. And I'm going to be looking to, we're going to roll this into a substitute because we did have one amendment. So Vice Chair Herrera, are you comfortable?
Yes, Chair, I move to forward ordinance or proposal O2025-523 and roll all amendments into a substitute to the full council with no recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion before us, which is to roll O2025-523 into a substitute and forward to the full council with no recommendation? Vice Chair Herrera, you're, do you want to just, you explained it to me earlier, why no recommendation, just in case the public's listening?
Yeah, just no recommendation because we do anticipate more amendments coming out on final. And we just wanted to, this might look a little different than what we're moving forward now, so I just wanted to leave that avenue out there.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion on the table? Okay. Ms. Persons, do I just do all those in favor, a roll call, a voice fight? Okay, perfect. All is in favor of forward, rolling O2025-523 into a substitute and forwarding it to the full council with no recommendation, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Ms. Demuth, for all your work on this. And we will be in contact about the conversation we had during this meeting. Is there any other, well, this is a special meeting, we can't do any other business, so I'm not even going to ask the question. Thank you, everybody. Hopefully we will be back to our regular council meeting business next week with technology agreeing with us. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you.